Okay, thanks Phil. Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Kentucky Retirement System. And with that, Michael, are you going to give the legal public statement?
I am, yes ma'am. I want to note that this is a regular meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute, Section sixty-one point eight-two-six and may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority Office located at twelve-sixty Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. I ask if you are speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within thirty minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, and Sherri, the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Ms. Bova?
Here.
Ms. Eves?
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
And Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri, and that's all. We have a quorum. And are there any public comments?
No, ma'am, no public comment.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have a, we have the minutes of June the fifth to approve. Are there any, any comments, any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, I'd like a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, I think that was Pruitt.
It was one of the two, at least.
Yeah. And the second? Second? Thank you, Ramsey. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the report, and this is, I guess, the, again, the first report of the combined KPPA Audit Committee. Not the combined, but the new one that reports to KPPA. Is that right, Kristin?
I think that is right. I think this is the first one.
Okay, and so if you would take over, it's, the format's gonna be a little different. Kristin has worked on eliminating a lot of duplication, and we really appreciate that. So.
Yes, so, as Ms. Hampton was saying, this is the new format, so with the passage of House Bill five-eight-seven, the joint CERS and KRS Audit Committee was dissolved and a KPPA Audit Committee was created. It's the same members, just a different structure. But with that new structure, it was a change in how items are reported to the CERS and KRS boards. So I worked with Mike Lamb and his team. We looked at everything that was typically presented to the Audit Committee and then presented to the other committees and boards. And so in an effort to reduce the duplication of effort, we came up with some changes, and those are presented on the next two pages. This was presented to and approved by the Audit Committee at the meeting on August twenty-fourth. I think the biggest change you're gonna see really doesn't affect this board, it impacted the Audit Committee. Instead of the quarterly financial statements going to the Audit Committee, they will just come to the KRS Board or the CERS Finance Committee. This change does not have any impact on items that would have a direct effect on KRS. Those items will still be reported to KRS. We can still report any items that KRS would like to hear about. So, no worries there. We, we will still report if needed. Are there any questions on these changes?
Sherri?
If you can move us to the next page. The other thing that we wanted to go over, so again, another change is the KRS Board doesn't have to approve anything from the Audit Committee now, it's just informational purposes. But we wanted to show you what we have going on right now. So, internal audit is currently working on twenty-four audits or projects. Fourteen of them are underway. One of them should wrap up in the next week, so excited about that. But we just wanted to share with everybody where, where we are right now, what we've done so far for the fiscal year. So, any questions on any of those items?
You're definitely busy.
I have one question, and just really for more informational purposes. Like, the first one is review of investment manager fees. Are you, is your job to review that what we are paying is actually being paid, or the suitability of the fees?
So what we are looking at is the accuracy, really a recalculation of what is being paid. Is the amount paid accurate? Based on the contract?
So not a suitability?
Right.
I can see that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? I will turn it back over to Ms. Hampton.
Madam Chair, I do have a real quick question, just, it's more about the effects of the legislation. Does the legislation preclude the KRS Board from having an internal auditor?
Pass that to Michael.
And, in what sense, Mr. Atkins, you're talking about, like, employing one for the Board, it's, the Board itself employing an internal auditor?
Yes.
So, the, this specific legislation does not, but the legislation that, in House Bill forty-four, which created the CERS Board and the KRS Board and their new, in their current situation, their current stances, says that they basically have two employees. They have a CEO and an outside general counsel. Other than that, they're not authorized by statute to have other employees, other than those two. So, it's not House Bill five-eight-seven that precludes it, it's the, the authorizing statute that created these two boards and their current stance.
And does, does KPPA have the authority then, under this new regime, to allow for the internal auditor function to be available on request or as needed by one of the, I don't know whether they're, they're not subsidiary boards, but adjacent boards, the CRS or KRS?
I think that would flow through the, the KPPA Audit Committee, in that if, if one of, if KRS or the CERS Boards felt that there was something that needed to be audited specifically, then the, the representatives from those boards that are members of KPPA that then sit on the Audit Committee would work with the Audit Committee to achieve what goals they may, they think needs to be achieved. If there's, we need, we, we think this needs to be on the audit plan, and we think this, this subject needs to be looked into, that could be achieved through those means.
Okay, so I just wanna put a marker down here, that this puts the KRS Board in, in a due diligence purgatory. And, and I understand that there are certain efficiencies, so I'm not, I'm not disparaging in any way the effects of the legislation, that I think there are probably other instances where streamlining our processes, clarifying authority and boundaries between the various boards could, could continue to be helpful. But, I am in a position in which my fiduciary duty flows to the members of the KRS system. I previously had the ability to exercise my due diligence with the assistance of an internal auditor, whose authority was separate and distinct from the executive authority of the system, except for administrative purposes. And now I don't have access to the expertise of an independent auditor who is looking out to serve me as a member of this Board. And therefore, I believe that the effects of the realignment is to create a tremendous blind spot for all of us that are on the KRS Board. So I would say that this shifts risk to me, as a member of the Board, in exercising my fiduciary duties and due diligence, in that I no longer have access to the independent expertise of an internal auditor. And I know that we do not have the ability to solve that today, I just wanna put it on the record, that I believe this puts the members of the KRS Boards at some peril, without the ability to hire or access the expertise of an independent auditor that is not primarily responsible for reporting to KPPA, but is primarily responsible for reporting to the direction of a majority of the KRS Board. And I've said my piece, I put it on the record. Hopefully, future iterations of, of streamlining the, the governance of these systems will rectify that issue, but I wanted to just let that be known.
Thank you, David, I appreciate your comments, and let me, let me talk to both Michael and John Shilton, and discuss it, and see if we can come up with something that would be a procedure that would, could close that loop.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, before, I just wanted to acknowledge that Ms. Eves, Trustee Eves, has come onto the meeting, and I just wanted to do a mic check for her real quick.
Please.
Good morning, Mary.
Hello, good morning, thank you.
Sure, just wanted to check and make sure you're, you were here and able, so I will mark her as, as being present here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome. And if, would you give a very short introduction to the rest of the Board?
Yes. My name is Mary Eves, and I am a partner at Denton's Bingham Greenbaum. I have practiced in the employee benefits area for my entire thirty-plus-year career. And I am delighted to be a part of your, of this organization, and to review and consider and vote on issues that we're asked to, we're asked to review. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Okay, and our next item on the agenda is the Joint Retirement Health Plan, and that's you, Dr. Miller?
Yeah, hi. We had a, a very lengthy, and covered a lot of information in the Joint Retiree Health Plan Committee. Connie Pettyjohn is much more of an expert, so I'm gonna pass to her and let her cover what we voted on and what we covered.
Good morning, thank you, Dr. Miller. Committee originally met on September the fifth, and then it was a little bit of quandary when we were looking at the math and what it would do to certain of the plans the retirees were being offered, so we met again on Tuesday. So I'll go over both of these memos, but first off, if that was okay, I want to go over the non-Medicare Kentucky Employees Health Plan, which we did not discuss Tuesday in the meeting, and the committee recommends that you ratify their actions on this, this section. This is the employees, or this is the retirees that are on the state employees' health plan, and these are retirees that are not age sixty-five, and they're not Medicare eligible. So, they're a part of the state group, as far as, you know, the setting the rates and the, so forth, for the premiums, for the plans, that's the actuaries with the Personnel Cabinet, Department of Employee Insurance, and they do that. So, the committee looks at what's being offered. I will tell you, the plans have not changed since last year in regards to benefits, but of course, the premium has changed. There is a sixteen point, a sixteen percent increase for some of the plans. It does range from ten to sixteen percent for some of the different levels, like couple, parent plus, or family. But in looking at what the committee recommends, is that the, the contribution plan will be the, that recommends the same as it was during twenty-twenty-three, which is the Living Well PPO Plan. That's the option that has a seventy-five, twenty-five plan share, and it also has copayment structures for drugs and medical benefits that the retirees seem to like, as well as being actuarially comparable to the plan in the statutes that is required beneficiary-wise, benefits-wise to satisfy this benefit structure. So they selected that plan at the single level for the contribution for retirees who have two-hundred-and-forty months of service or greater hired prior to seven-one of oh-three. And then anyone who has a hazardous duty, spouse, independent, that is eligible for contribution, that plan was set at the Living Well PPO Couple, Parent Plus, or Family option. The plans have included the tobacco use fee since two thousand and fourteen, as if you use tobacco, and it's a specific definition, then it's a single level, it's forty dollars. If there's a couple level, family or parent plus, it would be the eighty dollars. There are embedded HRAs, Health Reimbursement Arrangements, with a couple of these plans, Consumer-Directed Health Plans offered by the Kentucky Employees Health Plan. So the committee recommends that we continue allowing access to these plans to help the retirees with those benefits as they use them. And I wanna roll this down to, there is a living well promise, which means that if you take this living well promise, this year it's a biometric screening or a health assessment online between January one and July one of each year. If you fail to do that, you will be charged forty dollars a month. Even if you're at the two-hundred-and-forty month, a hundred percent contribution, this is something that you would pay, the forty dollars, if you don't complete the promise. And the last portion, well, not the last portion, but the next portion, and please let me know if you have questions around any of these, I know I'm going fast. I do know there are some new members on the Board, and I apologize for going through this, a lot of material in a short time. There is a default process, so say somebody is a new retiree and they failed to send in an insurance application, selecting a plan or waiving coverage. There is a plan that we have, that the committee selected, that allows them to be automatically covered. They can get out of this plan during that first month of their retirement, and they can also, per statute, select a different plan. So this actually gives them a way to do that, without just saying, no, you don't have coverage, you have to wait until next open enrollment to do so. So it is, is a protection, and it is the Living Well Basic CDHP, that does not have an HRA, so it's a basic plan. But like I said, they can, they can look at changing it, that's first month, if they don't like it, and it gives them an opportunity to file that request. Any dependents or retirees, you know, during a mandatory open enrollment, would default into the same plan if they don't fill out an application, you know, into the same plan as they were in this year. So this year it is a passive, or it is a non-mandatory, so they would just roll over, unless they take action to change their benefits to another plan, they don't have to submit anything as far as an enrollment application. And I think the next option is the cross-reference. This allows retirees and active state employees to access a family benefit with the state of Kentucky, and this is allowed by the state plans, as well as the other retirement systems. It allows a agency to pay that contribution for the retiree or the employee versus, maybe the trust doesn't have to provide it all, for example. It should be cheaper than them going through it, like, as a family. So it's something the state offers to retirees that are not Medicare eligible, and to the state employees, and we would recommend that you continue to allow that, the committee does. And one last thing is the Medicare secondary payer issue, where retirees who go back to work and they have Medicare plans, or Medicare benefit, cannot be enrolled in the Medicare Advantage Plans that we offer the Medicare retirees, because it's a federal law that Medicare pays secondary in those cases. So what the legislators and, and worked on is getting us access to the Kentucky Employees' Health Plan. So there's a plan there that works with them paying primary and Medicare paying secondary, as required by law, and they will rate those plans at a different premium if needed. This year it's the same as the, the vote for number one, so the committee recommends that you stay with that. There has been no change from DEI as far as the premium, so that group of retirees, I think there's about two to three hundred that go in and out of that benefit, based on whether they're working or not with a participating agency. So I, I believe, Dr. Miller, if you want to look at rolling all those up into a vote, unless they would wish to just, you know, discuss them individually, now the committee did go through these individually in great detail, so any questions you have, please let us know at this time. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
This is Mary.
Connie, I have.
Uh-huh. What is the plan year?
Twenty-twenty-four for next year.
But when does, what month does it start?
January, I'm sorry, it's a calendar year.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, Dr. Miller and Connie, on the wellness plan, where if you forget to do it, you're start, it's starting to pay, as I understand, forty dollars a month more?
Yes.
Is there, is there a cure? If they say, oh my goodness, I forgot, can they come back in and cure it?
They can, they can submit an appeal to the vendor that manages this for the Kentucky Employees Health Plan. If there's a legitimate reason, they'll even do a disability, like they may do a phone, they'll accommodate a disability if they need to. But if they've missed the date, and there's no attempts to show that they, they more than likely will not overlook that, that has been, and that, that is, that is, it would only be if they got on there, they attempted, something happened, they will look at that type of a situation and make a determination. I'm not gonna say they've never done it, but it is, it is rare. They wanna everyone to comply with that, because it has led to, per their stats, and, you know, the increase in buying into the wellness programs, becoming healthier, you know, doing the health coaching and the wellness-type efforts, case management, disease management, things like that. It identifies what they need to focus on with education and, and so forth, so I think that, you know, it's been a huge component of this plan that they've really felt has benefited, you know, the retirees and the state employees as, as well. So, but that's correct.
Do you know how many?
I'm sorry, if I may add to that, what Connie said, they, it is, the living well promise is completed every year, so if they miss it one year and they're charged the forty dollars, then the next year, they can complete the living well, and they wouldn't have to pay the forty dollars if they, but what Connie was speaking to is the changes within the plan year, so.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Miller, are you comfortable, we have a lot of motions, if I'm not mistaken, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Do you wanna take these one at a time, or do you wanna group them into a results of the retiree health?
Yeah, for simplicity, I would like to wrap it up into one motion.
Okay. Michael, can you give us the wording for that?
If, if you're gonna wrap it up into one motion, I would just make it a very simple and broad motion that is asking this Board to ratify the, the recommendations from the Joint Retiree Health Plan Committee from September fifth and September twelfth.
Michael, or, Dr. Miller, are we gonna do the non-Medicare separate from the Medicare? We could keep it general and do that for just the non-Medicare group, and then we could go through all of the Medicare items and do a second motion for the Medicare?
Yes.
If you'd like to.
We could keep that separate if we wanted to, yes. So we could do one motion that, you know, to, to, a motion to ratify the, the recommendations from the Joint Retiree Health Plan Committee regarding the non-Medicare-eligible retirees from September fifth.
Perfect.
Do I have to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Miller made the motion in the language that Michael has provided, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, any further conversation on this? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion, the motion passes, I've heard no no's, and thank you very much.
go through all of the Medicare items and do a second motion for the Medicare?
Yes.
If you'd like to.
We could keep that separate if we wanted to, yes. So we could do one motion that, you know, to, to, a motion to ratify the, the recommendations from the Joint Retiree Health, uh, Health Plan Committee regarding the non-Medicare-eligible retirees from September fifth.
Perfect. Do I have to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Miller made the motion, uh, in the language that Michael has provided. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, there's a motion and a second, any further conversation on this? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion, the motion passes, I've heard no-nos, and thank you very much, and we have a second motion now for the Medicare-eligible. And, Dr. Miller, are you comfortable with that? Would you like Michael to say that again?
Um, you can, Michael, or I can attempt it.
I, I think you may want Connie, Connie hasn't discussed the Medicare plans yet, so you'll probably want her to go over that first before you do the motion.
Thanks, Erin.
Um, right there, Sherry, thank you. This first section here, this is the plans offered by Humana. We have a contract with Humana that, um, we have two Medicare Advantage Plans, and then we have a medical-only supplement to original Medicare, and then we have what we call the mirror plans that helps a group of retirees that have issues getting into Medicare Part B in a timely manner. So the first four bullets, what, what we, the committee looked at is on Tuesday, is they looked at the way the rates came out as the ninety-three, thirty-five for the KPPA Premium Plan, just to give you an example, that's bit, that's normally two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-one cents, it has been the same for the past five years or so. And this is sort of an aberration as a result of, you know, financial, looking at how this is going, if we lower this like this or accept this areas, the committee looked at how that would change for that group of retirees in bullet number four, to cause them to have a more out-of-pocket costs when, um, you know, that, that really, they felt like they needed to take a look at it to make sure that it, it is not such a shift. And in doing that piece, Sherry, can you go over to the next memo and then we'll come back to number two? So what the committee looked at on the twelfth, they decided that they would recommend that the medical-only contribution rate and premium be set at the one-eighty-eight seventy-three, and that's what the cost is of the medical-only plan. They could use that amount then, a retiree with two hundred and forty months of service credit, a hundred percent, prior to seven-one oh-three, could use that money to select a plan, um, if they selected the, you know, for their spouse, for example, non-hazardous would have to pay, in the past it's been the two-fifty-two, fifty-one, well, and next year they're going to get an option to, with this benefit this way, to pay ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents. And then if you look at the essential plan, that's going to be four dollars and seven cents, so those are different than they have been in previous years. And so that kind of made a quandary with looking at how the contribution's set and how the money out of the trust is being paid to the retirees based on statute. So that is the recommendation for the, the plans for twenty-twenty-four, that it be the one-eighty-eight seventy-three, and then someone at seventy-five percent would get that much, fifty percent, twenty-five percent, and then zero would pay the whole premium. So, um, and looking at that, do you all have any questions around the contribution plan? Mr. Piercy and, uh, Dr. Miller were involved in the conversations on both those dates, and maybe can help me, if you all have questions, I can't answer.
Connie, that first bullet point, it says we recommend the contribution rate at ninety-three, thirty-five, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's the old committee.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I'm sorry, that's the old, the date of the fifth. So we had to leave that memo in place, and now we have a new memo dated, you know, where we met on the twelfth, that you changed it. So that's what, between the two, we were recommending the change here, go to be the contribution at one-eighty-eight seventy-three.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
And then they would still just pay the ninety-three, thirty-five if they're paying out-of-pocket, you know, non-hazardous, for example, for a spouse. But the hundred percent contribution would get the ninety-three, you know, thirty-five for the Premium Plan, and then this would be the people on medical-only, there's around three thousand of them, uh, they would get one-eighty-eight seventy-three as their hundred percent contribution. Last year, this year it was like a hundred and eighty-four dollars. So the medical-only plan is a self-insured plan by KPPA, the other plans are fully insured through Humana. So that's why we set this, this way, the committee does. Do you want to go back to those other bullets, um, maybe to? But this is based on.
That's good.
Okay. So, uh, and let me go back to number two, Sherry, if you don't mind, way on up there, there, okay. Now, this is, this part here, number two, is talking about the mirror plans. The mirror plan's purpose is, what it takes is it takes a medical benefit paying secondary to original Medicare, and then Humana offers a, a fully insured drug benefit. So we put those two together for people who don't have Part B, because you have to have Part A and B and D to be in a Medicare Advantage Plan. So until these people, there's about ninety-five of our retirees that fall into this bucket, they go in and out, we transition them to the MA plans when they get their Part B, but during the time they're in this mirror plan, it does cost a little bit more than what the contribution is. So for example, I do have a correction in paragraph two under number two, it says two hundred and thirty-four seventy-six would be the approximate fee you would pay for the Premium Plan. Actually, with this new contribution recommendation, it goes down to one-thirty-nine thirty-eight. So that kind of gives you one reason of why the committee looked at this type of, um, change. And this also allows, there's a couple of people that, um, are in this benefit, just because the facility they're in during a transplant, for example, would not accept a Medicare Advantage Plan, but, um, so the mirror plan does work to cover those people, you know, as, as the MA plan would, until they can get that event passed them and, and/or the hospital accepts. So we, we built that in as a protection, the committee and the board did back in two thousand and twelve, when we transitioned to the MA plans, so we would have a way to cover our retirees based on statute. So roll on down, unless, do you all have questions about any of that before I go on to the smaller sections? I know that was a lot. Um, there.
Connie?
I've already, yes, go ahead.
I would say if any of yous have questions and they want a private conversation with you, you know, so.
Certainly.
Feel free to give them a call.
Yeah. And there's the finance slides from the twelfth, the meeting on the twelfth, the committee are in board books, and so, you know, we'd be glad to go over any of those things like we did with the committee. Um, the last thing, or the last, yeah, the last thing is a default plan, and the committee recommends the medical-only plan because that plan, if someone goes out on the open market and erodes, let's say in their spouse's insurance, or they enroll in the VA, or they enroll in something else that's better for them, we, if we default them into anything but the medical-only, it would kick them out of their other benefit with Medicare, and we would not want to do that. But this allows them to, again, change to a new plan if they wish, or they will be covered during this month if they fail to send a new, an app in as a turning sixty-five Medicare, a person, or, or as a person who failed to fill out the insurance app when they retire. So it does give them that, that, that benefit, as I discussed back on the KEEP Plan, it's, it's a similar process. It started with Affordable Care Act, and it's been continued because it does benefit the retirees. And I believe that's all, if you have questions, let me know, otherwise I believe Dr. Miller will, will make your motion for this section. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we ratify the decisions by the, um, Joint Healthcare Plan Committee for Medicare-eligible retirees.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Pruitt. Okay, is there any more discussion? Uh, I'll add some things, I, I truly appreciate the committee and their thoughtful work in making sure that all of our members, uh, can benefit from the insurance, and when we have things that we're doing for a hundred members and things for three thousand members, and how many members in total is it, Connie, that have our insurance?
Sixty thousand for the Medicare lives, covered lives, about thirty-five or so for the non-Medicare, so we got about a hundred thousand covered lives and retirees now that we service.
Uh, I, I personally just appreciate the work you're doing in that side. So there's no more discussion?
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to have a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is, I think this is Erin, again, this is Erin, oh, Carrie, Carrie, um, the Administrative Regulation one-oh-five KAR and one-oh-five KAR, the two, the two-one-four, one-one-four-eights, Carrie, if you would.
Um, Ms. Jessica Bobian is going to take the lead on briefly going over the memo.
Okay.
Good morning. Uh, so I'm going to just present a big-picture overview of these regulations, and then we can get into any questions or discussion we have about them. Uh, one-oh-five KAR one-one-four-eight, merge, split, new, separate, or separated employers or entities, is a new administrative regulation. It establishes the procedures and requirements for the process of assigning actuarially accrued liability contributions for those Kentucky Employee Retirement System employers that merge with another employer or entity, that form a new or separate employer or entity, split or separate operations into multiple employer or entities. We also, um, are requesting approval to file a duplicated emergency regulation, one-oh-five KAR one-four-eight, one-one-four-eight E, which will take effect immediately upon filing. Uh, I do want to point one thing out specifically, that if we could go to page twenty-two of the board books. And, um, let me make sure we're on the right page here. Yeah, on, in section two here, on the third line, right after March, yeah, right after March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, right there, we would like to add, pursuant to KRS six-one-five-six-five-one-D-four, uh, we added that after speaking with the Regulations Compiler, because together we determined that that would provide the adequate statutory reference to cover our retroactivity. Um, so with that, I would like to see if anyone has any questions or discussion about this regulation.
Jessica, so are you saying that we need to amend this document?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Just strictly adding, right after March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, pursuant to, and then the specific statutory reference there.
Okay. Um, would anyone like to make this motion? Let me, is there, does everybody understand what we're doing? Mary, do you want to add anything? You're on mute, Mary.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Uh, I had expressed, um, questions, reservations about the retroactivity of this proposal, and, uh, the, I guess relying on the LRC and some previous research we haven't reviewed yet, suggests that, that that's not a legal issue, as I was concerned about. Obviously, what's important to be able to defend this before a judge or anyone that challenges it, and, um, so I had concern about the retroactive effectiveness of this back to, you know, essentially more than two years before it's even issued. The, um, the addition, I think, would be helpful to the statute that Jessica has mentioned, and, um, obviously it is a way of claiming the proportionality of the liability once someone splits into different organizations or combines with other organizations.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, is any, any questions on the discussion? Uh, would someone like to make the amendment to the document before we, um, vote on the document?
Madam Chair, I move that we incorporate the suggested language into the document and approve it, uh, as amended.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, William. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? There are no objections? Uh, we'll move, and make sure that there's, we'll move on to the vote for the, uh, document itself, and this is a motion to approve Regulation one-oh-five KAR one-one-one-four-eight and one-oh-five KAR one-one-four-eight E as presented and amended to authorize the KPPA staff to file the regulations with the Office of Regulation Controller. So I need a motion?
So move.
Thank you, William, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you, the motion will pass. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for this work and, and a tough discussion. Um, next we have the quarterly financial reports, Mike Lamb.
Good morning. I'm going to touch base on the balance sheet first, and near the bottom of that page, you'll see that our fiduciary net position for June thirty, twenty-twenty-three, uh, was five-point-one billion dollars, that's up fourteen-point-six-nine percent versus the prior-year amount of fourteen-point-five billion. Uh, that's a six-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollar increase, and it's being driven by the fourteen-point-one-two percent or five-hundred-and-fifteen million dollar increase in total investments, and specifically in the public equities investment asset class, which was up twenty-seven-point-oh-seven percent from the prior year. Uh, this six-hundred-and-fifty-four million dollar increase, uh, falls, flows through to our net position, uh, changes statement, which is on the next page, and, um, it's way down at the bottom, and compared to the one-thirty-one-three-oh-four of the prior year, uh, that's a five-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollar positive difference, and again, most of which is attributable to the net appreciation in the fair market value of investments, which is outlined a little bit more in note eight. Um, that's positive two-hundred-and-seventeen million in fiscal year twenty-three and was negative three-hundred-and-fourteen million in twenty-two, so that's a five-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollar swing year-to-year. If we move on to the insurance, uh, balance sheet on page forty-eight, similar to the pension statements, the fiscal year twenty-three fiduciary net position, position, uh, was two-point-three billion, that's up ten-point-two-eight percent from the prior-year amount of two-hundred-and-seventeen million. Um, mm, two-point-three million, sorry, not billion, uh, up two-hundred-and-seventeen million. This increase is also primarily driven by the increase in the public equities, uh, investment asset class, which was up twenty-point-six, twenty-point-one-six percent, and outlined further in note four. That increase, uh, flows through to the statement of changes, and near the bottom of page forty-nine, compared to the one-hundred-and-thirteen, uh, million dollar decrease in the prior year, I think that's a thousand, so, um, one-thirteen compared to the two-seventeen, uh, that's a three-hundred-and-thirty million dollar difference, most of which is attributable to the net appreciation in the fair market of investments, which is positive one-hundred-and-fifty-two million in fiscal year twenty-three and was negative one-hundred-and-fifty-seven million in the prior year, and that's a three-hundred-and-nine positive swing, also outlined in note eight. Any questions on the, uh, two statements there for pension and or insurance? We jump down to the contribution reports. Uh, as you can see, that light highlight shows that, um, all K-Plans reported positive net contributions, three-hundred-and-ninety-five-point-six million for K non-haz, twenty-six-point-seven million for K hazardous, and fourteen-point-four million for state police. Um, the K hazardous total inflows were up one-hundred-and-eighty-six million dollars, which was driven by that two-hundred-and-forty million dollars of general fund appropriation that you see in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, the net investment income was up thirty-two-point-eight million, and member contributions were up ten-point-four million, and that was, uh, due to an increase in salaries of two-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-six million dollars. There were some offsets to that increase, some of that was in employer contributions, um, some of it was in the ALC and a decrease, uh, of sixty-three-point-one million in employer cessation payments that we did not have in fiscal year twenty-three. The K hazardous plans inflows were higher due to, were higher by sixteen-point-ten million, state police inflows are down due to them not receiving any general fund appropriation in fiscal year twenty-three when they received two-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars in twenty-two. The benefit payments and admin expenses remained flat on a period-to-period comparison, and there was a significant increase in unrealized gains for all three plans, resulting in an overall positive net change in position for the current period. If we scroll down to that bottom cash flow chart. and there was a significant increase in unrealized gains for all three plans, resulting in an overall positive net change in position for the current period. If we scroll down to that bottom cash flow chart, it indicates that even without the investment activity, contributions still cover the outflows of benefits and refunds and admin expenses, except for the state police plan, which shows a $1 million negative cash flow for the period. For the K non-hazardous, even if we remove the $240 million of general fund appropriations, we would still have a positive cash flow of $70 million for the year. The insurance contribution reports. Again, the net contribution, you'll see that C non-haz has a positive net contribution of $66.5 million? Maybe I missed that one. 68.1, okay, for the year, despite lower contributions and the C has reported, oh, I'm on the C plan. Sorry about that. 68.1 is the K non-haz positive contributions. However, for K has, net contributions are negative $3.1 million. And for the state police, they're $700,000. This is for the insurance plans of the K systems. The bottom chart, cash flow for the insurance shows that without investment activity, the net contributions would be positive for K non-haz, negative for K has, and negative for state police as well. That's all I have on those financial statements. Before I move to the admin budget, any questions or clarifications? For this admin budget, I'm going to drop all the way down the bottom and then give you the high level. And if you would want more detail, I'll do that, but I'll wait till you ask for that. So the total admin spend at the bottom for fiscal year 2023, the administrative expenses were 18.33% or $9.2 million under budget. This includes not having to utilize any of the $4.1 million of unallocated reserve. And if we don't consider the reserve and looked at what we spent versus what we expended, expected to spend, we were 11.09% or $5.1 million under budget. Overall, we spent $40.984 million, which was 1.24% or $503,000 higher than the $40.481 million spent in the prior year. You know, there was many things that were right on budget, a few things that were over, and several things that were under. That $40 million that we spent is allocated based on the approved hybrid percentage. And as you can see, that first chart, it shows how that 40.98 is being allocated among the five pension systems. At year end, we also have to adjust for specific separation expenses per statute and specific charges that are unique or 100% applicable to the C or and/or K plans. And that bottom chart shows how we've reallocated that allocation. The total doesn't change. It's still $40.984 million spent, but that's the final allocation to those plans once we make adjustments for separation expense as well as plan-specific adjustments. Any questions on that admin budget? This chart here shows that the J P Morgan fees that in the past, our J P Morgan accounts were on a, an earned credit setup to where we, the interest earned offset our fees. And so we have since transitioned all of our J P Morgan Chase accounts to a hard-earned interest because we felt like we were not generating enough fees to offset the earnings that we were being credited with and therefore did not get to experience those earnings. So we lost about $100,000 because of that account setup in the fiscal year. However, as we started transitioning various J P Morgan accounts to hard-earned interest, we began earning interest. And so for the year, we've earned $111,000 in the clearing account, 37 in the C account, 30 in the K account, for a total of $179,000. And all of our accounts are now set up that way, so we don't have that hybrid earnings credit offsetting fees going forward.
I have a question about this one. What do the fees cover?
So every month, we get a fee bill, and it covers the checks that are processed. It covers the wires that are processed. It covers the monthly maintenance of those fees. Various other items. I could definitely provide you a list of them for the last month, but there are several, several fees. It's basically the administration of the account itself, and it's for each account that we have.
And what's average balance in the accounts? You don't have to, you can follow, sorry.
It's really funny. I have the C balances in front of me because I discussed them yesterday, but I do not have the K balances in front of me. But that is something that we're looking at, is the average bank balances versus what should be in there. And it's something my team and I are, still have on our list to do, to report back a recommendation to this board as to what should be appropriate in those accounts.
I would just like to say that I think that the system as a whole has enough money that they should not be paying fees. And as a, you know, as a comp from J P Morgan. I mean, I, I have seen lots of accounts that don't pay any fees that have a much lower balance, I'm sure, than.
Yeah, let me, let me discuss that with J P Morgan. One caveat to that might be we, these are through the master agreement with the Commonwealth because J P Morgan is their bank, and we use that bank. We do have some separate agreements with them. So that's definitely a topic I will broach with Chase and see what we can do on that end.
Thank you.
You might also, Ramsey, the, the activity in those accounts is tremendous. We're talking about thou, you know, tens of thousands of transactions. Maybe hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, there, there's, there's lots of that.
Be interesting because what Ramsey's pointed out is it's not just us, it's the state. You know, they're really big balances, once you take us and the state. And interesting earnings question. Thank you, Ramsey. Thank you, Mike. Mike, you got more?
I do. There's a lot today for me. I think if we go to the next slide, it's the outstanding invoices by employer. You'll see a little bit of changes in this from the last quarter. The 630, 2023 total of $5.1 million is 35% lower than the 331 amount of $7.8 million. The bulk of that decrease is due to standard sick leave. The state police were able to pay many of their past due sick leave invoices. That decrease has been offset by an increase in the AALC amounts directly attributable to the Kentucky River Community Care, Inc. That continues to increase $363,000 per quarter. The top 10 employers are listed below, and Kentucky River Community Care is the highest. All of that is AALC amounts. State Police is still the second highest, but it's much lower than it was last quarter. $480,000 is standard sick leave still. The rest of those accounts are a combination of sick leave, health insurance reimbursements, pension spiking, et cetera. The next page is the penalty invoices that we did through the quarter. We waived two of them due to a new hearing officer or reporting officer. 11 were created for the quarter, totaling $11,000, and nine of the penalty invoices were paid. That's all I have on the financials. Any questions on that? Okay, I think the next item is also me. Do we want to move to the next topic?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Since there's no questions, yes.
Sherri, I think we're on to the biennial budget. So I felt it was.
Did, did you want to, the next thing on the agenda was actually the cyber insurance policy?
Oh, yes. I do want to speak to cyber. So I don't have a document for cyber insurance, but what I wanted to bring to the K board today is some information, and then I would also like to request a motion, and I'll get to that at the end. So the procurement team for the K P P A has put out bids to find cyber insurance. We have received some bids back, and we've evaluated those bids. It's still in the bidding process, and so there's a lot of confidentiality around it, and I can't share everything. But I wanted to share that we're close to choosing a successful bidder. And as we were reviewing the language for the policy, the policy obviously will name the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority as the named insured. I felt that it was appropriate that we also name the Kentucky Retirement System as well as the county employee retirement systems on that policy as additional named insured. That will still be subject to negotiation with the successful bidder, but I wanted to ask your permission to do that so that we didn't have to come back and do that when the time came. So my motion, my request for motion would be to allow the K R S to be an additional named insured on the cyber insurance policy once and if it is placed.
Michael, would this be just an indication, or do we really need to make a motion?
I would leave that up to maybe to legal. I thought that.
I think a motion would be appropriate, just so the board has spoken to it publicly.
Okay, okay, thank you. Are there any questions to Mike about this? Okay.
Well, I guess we'll get the details, but I'll, I will make a motion that the, the K R S Kentucky Retirement System be an additional insured for the ultimate cyber insurance plan that is, that is signed.
And I second that one.
Thank you for it. Thank you, Mary. In my opinion, I concur. I mean, it's, there's just too many things that could leak through, so to speak. So we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I had a question, Lynn. Is the proposal being processed through the Finance Cabinet, or are we doing that?
It's being done through the Finance Cabinet, yes. So we're working through them. They, they are handling all of the
Yeah.
45A requirements related to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, John. Thanks, Mike. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? The motion's passed, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm on to the biennial budget recommendations. So the K P P A board will be the ones that approve the budget that's going to get submitted for the biennial budget. That's due on October 1st. I felt it was appropriate that we give the K board a little bit of information just so they are aware of what we plan to present to the K P P A board next week. So these documents are draft. But what I'll ask of the K P P A board is to approve the biennial baseline of $51.6 million. And then I will also ask for the K P P A to allow us to submit an additional budget request to the Budget Office for an increase of headcount to our cap. So our cap's at 270 right now. We want to increase nine positions in fiscal year '25, five positions in fiscal year '26 out of cost of 1.1 million and 1.8 million. In addition to that, since this was given, we are going to also ask for five additional positions in fiscal year '26 for a total of, well, six more positions, so a total of 20 positions to our cap. We, we are hoping those additional six positions that are not in this memo can be submitted without a dollar amount associated with them. And so I can explain that in a minute. But those are the two things we're going to ask the K P P A board. Below this memo is a PowerPoint presentation that kind of gets into the weeds a little bit, so we'll, we'll jump down a little bit and talk through some of those. The next slide, one more slide. I got a lot of smoke in here. All right, so the fiscal year '24 admin budget that we just approved a few months ago, that the Budget Task Force worked on, was $50.4 million. And included in that budget is a reserve amount of $40.8 million. If we go to the next page, we were given $51.6 million from the Budget Office. That's what they say our budget needs to be unless we do an additional budget request. I asked them how we got from the $50.4 million last year to the $51.6. They said they looked at our spending, our budget, and they applied the 6% salary increase as well as health insurance costs, and they gave us $1.2 million to our baseline. What this is, is our permission to spend money. So they provided that $51.6 million baseline. They said you can budget that however you want, except for personnel costs. Here's your personnel costs that we want budgeted for, and it's $37.7 million. They said that these are restricted funds. We have a lot of latitude in how we budget and/or expend those restricted funds because they're coming out of the trust and not out of the general funds. So we will submit a $51.6 million budget if we page down. I'm going to show you how we're going to submit that. So they gave us the $37.7 million in personnel. That's what they want us to budget. That's $3.2 million higher than our current 24 admin budget. And then I budgeted every other line item exactly the same as the 24 budget. And so what that did is it took our reserve down from $4.8 million to $2.8 million. The K Bud biennial budget system does not have a line item for reserve, so we have to put that reserve somewhere else. In the prior biennial budget, it was spread among several accounts. The Budget Work Group has agreed to place that total $2.8 million up in the legal line item, bringing that to $4.8 million. So our biennial submission of $51.6 million should be broken out in that kind of, that highlighted yellow column with $4.8 million in legal. And those are the differences between the 24 budget that we're currently under and the 25 submission. Again, this is just permission to spend. The Budget Work Group will work next spring to get into the details of how we allocate that $51.6 million to all of the individual line items and how much we'll set aside in reserve that we don't plan to spend in '25 and '26. The next page is the form that we need to submit requesting additional headcount and the associated costs with that. So that's the summary form. It's just asking for the salaries of those positions. We also have to provide justification of why we're requesting those positions, et cetera, which the executives and myself will be working on. The next page, I broke down those positions by the salaries, included FICA, the retirement percentage, the health insurance costs, and came up with the dollar amount that I think these positions will cost us. So in year one, we're only bringing in nine. That's a million dollars. In year two, we're bringing in an additional five, which is $755,000, but you still have the year one people. So the fiscal year '26 amount is $1.8 million. So in our additional budget request, I think if you page down, we will do our baseline of $51.6. We'll ask for a million and 25 related to headcount change, another 1.8 million in '26, bringing our total budget request to that. 52.7 and 53.5. All of this is due to the K Bud Office on October 1. We're going to ask the K P P A by statute. We have to have them approve our submission before that, and this is the draft of what we're going to present to them. And again, this was presented for information to the K board, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions?
I just have one question. Do we ever compare the biennial budgeted expenses to the, what we're currently, the current admin expenses? And look at like a percentage increase over time?
We do, and I have a chart for that. We typically only spend about $30, $35 million out of that K Bud approved amount of $50 million. We're pretty diligent in our review and fiduciary responsibilities of spending that money because it is trust money. So yes, I have a chart of the amounts that we've spent versus what we were approved to spend for the last three, four years.
So, and I, I just, I jotted down a number that current, current cost, when we went over it earlier, was 1.24%, and that's what we're talking about here. The admin.
The admin cost increase is 1.24%?
No, no, just the, I'll send you a follow-up, and you don't have to go.
Fair enough.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Boba.
Ramsey, I will say that I'm mystified by the biennial budget. But as Mike said, this is out of trust funds. This is not into the state taxes and things like that. So it does mystify me. And I've done a lot of budgets.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I guess this is a little bit like some of the discussions we've had in the Investment Committee.
in which information is presented to us, but sometimes just being more of an outsider looking in on it. I'm not sure we have any way of calibrating whether this is good news, bad news, or we should have a concern. So my question is, what metrics or benchmarking are appropriate for us to gauge the performance in Kentucky against what would normally be considered an appropriate level of administrative expense to either total trust fund balances or number of members? I don't know what metrics would allow us to make a data-driven assessment of these numbers, but I am interested in knowing whether or not our administrative expenses, either per capita or as a matter of a proportionate share of total assets, is demonstrates a good performance or within a range of what would be considered appropriate. Or in the absence of having such a thing, what justification is there for essentially saying that when you've seen one retirement system's administrative expenses, you've seen one retirement system's administrative expenses? I guess I'm looking for the kind of advice that would allow us to make a judgment as to whether or not this information is within an appropriate range of expenditure, given that it is trust funds. That shouldn't be our excuse that we're not spending taxpayers' monies even more so when we're spending our members' monies. It would be nice to know what benchmarking or data-driven assessment we could have that would let us know we are in an acceptable range.
Mike, can I speak to that?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you wanted to talk on the CEM study about that.
David, we have begun to use our organization called CEM. We used them once seven years ago, I think. They are the only, and that's the premier collector of a variety of information with regard to public retirement systems. The most, I'll give you the top line, and if you and we can dig further down, but to give you some assurance, we looked at the cost per member of our administration, of our KPPs, and we were adjusting for the fact that our pension expenses is an anomaly. When we brought that pension expense down to the norm, we were at $98 per member. And the peer group that we selected, there are 16 or 17 peer firms, largely by size, but all public funds, was $131. So if you want to look at a kind of the quick bottom line, we're operating a lot more efficiently than our peer group is.
That's very helpful. I guess I'm.
David, I'd like, I'd like to add, I'd like to add, these are budgets, and this is budgets out two years to the for the Finance Cabinet, the Budget Cabinet to handle. We go back to the numbers that come in our audited financials. And so comparisons and things like that come from audited financials, not from a budget that follows the guidelines that comes from the state.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. These are placeholder planning documents more than actual budget documents.
And I think you could look at that, what Mike talked about, about the reserve. That's basically everything above the reserve is ties really back to our budget, and the reserve is the difference between that number that the cabinet gives us and our budgeted numbers.
Yeah, that's helpful.
David, we're going to do that CEM study on alternate years. And the other alternate years, we have just begun a, to Ramsey's point, we've begun an investment, a CEM investment benchmarking where we're going to be looking at really drilling down on fees. Not just looking at fee schedules, but actual fees paid and fees paid by asset category and we'll get a good.
That's wonderful. Yeah, that's wonderful. That's a great resource. Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, there is not a vote on this, but I do really, personally, I appreciate all the work that you've done, and I also appreciate the questions that you're getting from trustees.
Me too.
So with that, thank you. And we go to the Investment Committee. This is Pruitt and Steve.
I will, I will start and then get out of the way. For someone who has good information for you, I will say, as we all know, it's been an extremely volatile year. In my 50 years of experience in the investments, we've never seen the interest rates change as dramatically as they did. I wish our Federal Reserve Board members had as much experience and knew what they were starting, the mess that they were starting, but nevertheless, we weathered that quite well. Our, our staff took us down to, given the levels of interest rates last year or two years ago as well. Took us down to as low a duration as we dared have, duration being the volatility measure for your bond portfolios. And so we, we outperformed in those areas and dodged really some significant bullets that unfortunately, some of our friends in the banking industry did not dodge. And so with that, I will, I will turn it over to Steve for the, for the details, and then I will follow up a little bit later with the response to, as Mr. Atkins made really good points in our Investment Committee meetings about our allocations, and I will, I will address what we're doing there. So Steve?
Sure. Good morning. Thank you very much, Pruitt. Appreciate the introduction. We have included several of the reports that were presented to the regularly scheduled KRS Investment Committee meeting on August 8. All of the material presented at the meeting is available in Board Books for Review. No actions were taken that required Board ratification, and as Pruitt mentioned, I just really briefly wanted to cover a couple of highlights from the material that was presented, provide a bit of an update, and answer any questions. Fiscal year 2023 presented a very challenging investment landscape, as Pruitt mentioned. Significant dispersion across major asset classes as markets struggled with the headwinds and uncertainty from rapidly rising interest rates, slowing economic growth, and geopolitical tensions. While public equities, especially U.S. large-cap growth stocks, posted strong performance for the year, market breadth, which is measured by, you know, the, which stocks are driving the overall market, remained very narrow, with the 10 largest stocks accounting for roughly 50% of the market's total return, which tends to be a pretty unhealthy undertone to what are represented as strong headline returns. Several asset classes, including fixed income, real estate, private equity, and commodities, all produced negative returns for the fiscal year. And as the market narrative shifted from, you know, we had talked a lot about transitory and from an inflation perspective to resilient to almost in the last quarter of the fiscal year, we were talking resurgent. The portfolios produced positive absolute performance during the final quarter of the fiscal year, although they did trail their benchmarks as they failed to keep pace in that strong risk-on environment. For the fiscal year, all of the portfolios exceeded their assumed rates of return and matched or outperformed their benchmark. The KRS Pension Portfolio gained 6.96%, and the SPRS Pension Portfolio gained 7.58% versus their benchmark, which returned 7.02%. The KRS Hazardous Pension Portfolio returned 9.64%. The KRS Insurance Portfolio returned 9.87, and the SPRS Insurance Portfolio returned 9.47. KRS Hazardous Insurance Portfolio returned 9.29, all against their benchmark, which produced a return of 8.70%. So obviously, the difference there is the different risk profiles and asset allocations that have been adopted across the better-funded plans versus those that are less well-funded. In dollar terms, that outperformance for the fiscal year equates to approximately $10 million for the pension composite and $23 million for the insurance composite. For the fiscal year, manager outperformance and, as Pruitt mentioned, staff's positioning within the asset allocations, both in the core fixed income and the public equities, were the most significant drivers of outperformance for the fiscal year. This was especially evident, as I mentioned, in the public equity and core, which combined to produce between 75 and 100 basis points of outperformance for the year. Looking at pure universe, depending on the data set with a 12-month period ending June 30, the average performance ranged from about 6.5% to 8.5%. Much like with the markets, there was a very broad range of dispersion in the universe. And that was primarily driven by plans allocation to alternative asset classes, which underperformed for the fiscal year, for the 12-month period. So really, you see a unique circumstances where smaller plans, which tended to have higher allocations to public markets, especially to public equities, outperformed larger plans that have higher allocations to alternatives. What's really shocking, I think, is the amount of dispersion in public pension plans. I think we've seen, you know, some prints in nearby states as low as 2% for the fiscal year. We've seen some returns as high as 15%. So that, that level of dispersion is pretty unique in public pension market. And again, it was largely driven by how much of an allocation the plans had to the alternative asset classes, which underperformed for the fiscal year. Staff was encouraged by the durability of the plans. As Pruitt mentioned, it was a difficult year. Our, we were able to produce strong risk-adjusted performance during a year when the markets had very strong periods of down. The first six months, we think about, was a very negative period for the markets, and then the second half of the fiscal year was very strong. So the fact that we were able to outperform the benchmark in most cases during that period, I think speaks to the durability of both the managers we selected, the asset allocations, and the guidelines that have been provided by the IC and the Board. And we're optimistic about, you know, current positioning. We think we're well-positioned. All of the portfolios are well-positioned to take advantage of opportunities that are going to be presented in the markets. You know, if anything, we think that volatility will remain elevated. The discussion in markets currently is, you know, whether or not we're at peak rates. I saw we we've had a couple of hotter inflation prints the last couple of days than what the markets were anticipating. The job market remains strong. Most of the work that's been done on the inflation front, we feel, has been done in kind of the low-hanging fruit. We're left with some sticky components of inflation that we think are going to take longer to bring down. What we think that means for markets is that, while we might be near peak rates, you know, and whether or not we pause at the next meeting, and then in November, they, the Fed were to raise another 25. We don't really think that the next 25 is important. We think the pivot is a long way off. We think they're going to maintain these elevated rates for a longer period of time, certainly than what was initially priced into markets. If we go back, we, you know, early pricing was looking for a Fed pivot before the end of this year. We were supposed to have cut already 50 basis points by now. That's not going to be the case. Markets continue to price out how long or when the Fed is going to start pivoting and when they'll actually start cutting rates. So now we're looking at the end of 2024 before we really start to see any material decline in rates from current levels. The knock-on to that is what that means to economic growth. You know, we talked about no landing, soft landing, hard landing. I think the market is positioning right now for more of a soft landing scenario, which aligns with us. We do think there's going to be a, you know, a material impact on economic growth. I think the question is going to be how prolonged it's going to be, what, how much, you know, it takes several quarters. You know, this, the rise in rates, not only the magnitude, but the speed at which it was accomplished is pretty unprecedented. And so the impact on the economy is going to take some time to flow through. As we've talked about at the Investment Committee meeting, we, you know, a number of entities, including corporations, still haven't had to face, given the timing of their refis or their maturities, still haven't had to face these elevated rates. I mean, they're still operating in an environment that, you know, when they funded themselves at very, you know, historically low rates. When those maturities come due or the need for refinancing or additional financing comes, you know, it's, it's going to come at a pretty substantially higher levels than the current operating budgets that they have. So that's, that's going to cause some pain. We're already seeing that on, to some extent, in revisions to earnings, which ultimately should bleed through to the pricing in the equity market. And so we think there's going to be volatility. We think that's going to lead to opportunity, and again, we think the portfolios are well-positioned to take advantage of that. Final performance for July was recently released, and all of the portfolios had a strong start to the new fiscal year, with performance for the month up between 150 and 175 basis points. August performance is still preliminary. The portfolios gave back some of that July performance with, you know, early indications that performance is going to be down about 1% across portfolios for the month of August. September's shaping up to be the same. We still have, you know, half the month left, so it's a little early to call. But markets are going, you know, there's volatility, and we're kind of in a range trade right now, range-bound with up days, down days. Hard to get a trend, establish a trend, and as we say, that that's going to take some time. It's going to take really some further guidance from the Fed and determination of, you know, what the next move and what the economic impact of the moves to date have already been. We could jump, Sherri, to page 104, please. As Pruitt mentioned, please, 104. It's the allocation section, sorry. There we go. Thank you very much, Sherri. This was a good topic that was discussed extensively at the Investment Committee meeting. One of the additions we've made to these slides is the, in addition, unfortunately, the tag did not occur on this slide, but on the next several slides, we'll see that there's a pro forma for the allocations. And so as of the end of the fiscal year, you know, we've talked about a lot that the portfolios were underweight and below the prescribed range for both real return and real estate asset classes, with corresponding overweight in specialty credit and cash. The combination of those two asset classes, Investment Staff believes, acts as the best proxy while we look to deploy capital into those, the real asset and real estate markets. The asset allocations, and this was a great point that was brought up at the Investment Committee meeting, specifically for those asset allocations that were outside of the ranges. For the fiscal year, the impact on performance attributed to being outside of the range and not at target was actually modestly positive, contributing between 2 and 32 basis points of relative outperformance compared to the benchmark for the fiscal year. So the good news is it wasn't detrimental. Being outside of the ranges was not detrimental for performance for the fiscal year, but obviously, that's not the position we want to be in. We're working hard to both get into the range as well as to get closer to the targets that have been prescribed by the Investment Committee and the Board in the, in the Investment Policy Statement. Capital has begun to be called and invested by the real return mandates that were approved earlier this year. In discussion with these managers, we expect a significant amount of committed capital to be called over the next four to eight weeks. We were talking to, to a couple of them this week. And all of the capital being called and invested will move the portfolios closer to their targets, and as we see on the several of these slides, you know, that on a pro forma basis, calling that capital, if we were to account for that capital being called immediately, bring us into range or near into range across all of the portfolios. You know, and that's looking at the, we committed capital, you know, it's a, one, it's a moving target, obviously, given the market moves and the other asset classes in the pricing. But there are cases where we have committed capital, so we do an evaluation whether or not we think that committed capital is likely to be called. There are cases where we're outside of an investment period, but we have recallable capital or, you know, and speaking with the manager, there's not additional opportunities that they're pursuing, so we don't consider that when we look at our pro forma allocations. We really want a high probability that that capital will be called. The period in which it will be called, you know, that, that will depend both on the mandate and the manager and the opportunity set that they have in front of them. As I mentioned, for the, for the real assets, you know, I think we'll, we'll have most of the capital, or at least a significant portion of it, called before the end of this calendar year. And then probably into the first quarter, the second quarter of next year, the remainder of that capital is likely to be called. We're also in the final stages of evaluating additional potential real asset opportunities that we hope to bring and recommend to the Investment Committee in the next quarter. During the last quarter of the fiscal year, we committed an additional 75 to 200 basis points across portfolios to existing real estate managers. And we expect most of that to be called before the end of the year, so that's also included, included in the pro forma numbers. And we also discussed at the Investment Committee meeting that we're engaged with Wilshire doing a revision to the asset liability as well as the asset allocation. If we remember, the last time this was done, capital market assumptions were materially different than they are today. You know, and that would lead us to a very different asset allocation than we currently have. We're putting some bumpers on that as far as making too drastic of changes from asset allocation to asset allocation. Again, these are supposed to be longer term, but we do want to account for the changes that we've seen in capital markets. And obviously, the biggest one, as Pruitt mentioned, is the rise in rates. So any asset class. So any asset class with a yield component is likely to have a larger allocation in an efficient portfolio. So what we really want to do is we want to focus on building the most efficient portfolio we can, given the level of risk that we want. That takes into account the current capital market assumptions as well as staff's investment views, with a focus on liquidity. And we want to target portfolios that have a higher probability of achieving their assumed rate of return at reduced risk levels over the longer period. So that's the goal of the process. We're in the, as I mentioned, we're in the final stages. We should be bringing that hopefully before a special, specially-called investment committee meeting in the next several weeks, making a recommendation to changes in the asset allocations. Again, we, we, we're unlikely to have drastic changes. You know, if we look at it, an unconstrained asset allocation, given current capital market assumptions, you know, you would see public equities get very, very low. You would see a significant increase in the likes of specialty credits. You know, some portfolios, obviously, given the risk and the yield that's available and the expected return, any modeling is going to favor that. So we do want to temper that a little bit and make realistic changes to the asset allocations that both align with current capital market assumptions as well as our investment views. Pruitt, I don't know if you wanted to add some additional color on that?
Well, before I say anything, does anyone have any questions for Steve at this point? Steve, you might just give a quick update on the internal bond portfolio initiation.
Absolutely. In addition to the changes that we've made to the public equity, the shift in our stance in the overall public equity portfolios. As we know, we had a very short duration profile when rates were near zero. You know, we just didn't feel that the risk reward that was being offered by the core portfolio especially, and the fact that it wasn't serving as the ballast that it traditionally does to the riskier components of our portfolio. We had taken the duration very short. That was accomplished primarily by investing in a short corporate portfolio, so front-end rates. We've taken a couple of iterations in extending that, so we're back to relatively a full core. It's not necessarily a call on peak rates, but we think that the yield that's available and the expected return there is commensurate with the level of risk. So we extended the duration profile. As I mentioned, in kind of the performance attribution, that was a large contributor to outperformance relative to the benchmark over the last 24 months. So it served its function. In part, what we've done is extend both from that short duration into a more core aggregate-type profile. But we've also taken the opportunity to bring a little less than 20% of that portfolio in-house. Obviously, that's done at, you know, zero cost. It's managed by staff. We'll look to extend that over time, you know, especially as we build out internal staff. We would hope to be able to add more assets to in-house management. You know, the only other thing that I wanted to bring up as far as, that was discussed at the IC, and I know it's been a topic of concern, has been our proxy voting. So I'm happy to report that as of the end of the last fiscal year, the beginning of this fiscal year, all eligible securities in all of the portfolios, whether internally or externally managed, are being voted in accordance with the KRS proxy voting policy. So we're in compliance with the statute and will be, excuse me, will be in compliance with the reporting element of that statute as well and have posting all proxies voted to the websites by the end of the next quarter.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. First of all, I want to make an apology to our board that your investment committee was made an egregious error last year in not putting all of our money in seven technology stocks. We just didn't get the message that, you know, everything else we were doing was wasted time and those seven stocks would have done very nicely for us, but.
Pruitt, can you, can you tell us what the seven stocks for the year ahead are that we should be putting our money in?
You have to subscribe to his newsletter.
Okay, good. It's a monthly subscription like Netflix.
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
One other comment that you, this pro forma is, I think, a big help, but we have some board members who may not have had a lot of experience or haven't had a lot of experience in investing. And when we hire, let's say, an equity manager for a particular mandate of emerging markets, and we say we're going to look for 200 million, we give them the 200 million. And fairly quickly, that's invested, that's gone from us. In terms of the private debt, the specialty credit, the private equity, it's a different process. We, we say that, we tell them that they're going to get 200 million and, and please make a lot of money for us with it. But as that process, they can't find that, those investments very quickly. Or hopefully, they don't. They're looking for good investments. So it is phased in. It may take a year, may take over a year for some of these mandates to be funded where they take it down. So that's one reason that money's sitting in cash, because we needed to, when they call, they call it. And but, so that's a bit of a difference in some of these asset allocations here. And secondly, is we have, what, seven categories broken down. The world of investments doesn't quite neatly, so neatly fit every one of these. For instance, we, in specialty credit, we have at least one, maybe two managers who are doing debt that's real estate-related or mortgage-related. We don't put them in real estate because their returns are more in the fixed income market. So there are a lot of crossover there. And I wish we could, you know, we could have 50 categories, but that wouldn't be very good for presenting to the board. So I just wanted to make, we have more certainty here than really exists in the portfolio. What our staff does is really look at where the source of returns are. We call it portfolio attribution for these managers. You know, if a manager is, is, is doing a mortgage-related specialty credit, the real estate market does affect those returns. So we, when we, in the process of selecting those managers, we look very closely at what their, what their sources of returns are. So just wanted to add that. And lastly, that's, let me get rid of this spam call I got on my phone here. That's all I had to ask. It was, I think the staff did a good job last year. And I'm very pleased with the direction we've gone with our internal managers. So, any questions?
Pruitt, I have a comment. I think that the staff and the investment committee itself really gets a pat on the back for what's been happening. I recently, the state has had two bond rating upgrades in which, in both cases, they attributed changes in the pension plan. And lately, in political circles, you've heard the changes from KPPA, and in particular for the state police, but in KPPA, getting credit again for the bond rating, or a part of a credit for the bond rating upgrade. So I think the committee's doing a great job. You've got a very active committee and a committee that asks questions, and that's really very good. So Steve and his staff is doing great, so I like to sit back and smile at the work that you all did.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the dialogue with the investment committee. We look forward to continuing working with them and getting across our new asset allocations. And again, I think, like I said, I can't stress enough, I think we are, you know, we are excited by the opportunity in the market right now, the positioning of the portfolios and our ability to take advantage of some opportunities that we think are going to present themselves. And I think that means good things for the systems, especially in the longer term. So I'm excited for that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I think we go on to the CEO report. John?
Yes, thank you, Lynn. Just want to report some of the things that have been going on in the last, since the last quarterly meeting. Ed and I meet with Michael Borden once a month to monitor the progress of litigation. And there will be some things discussed in the closed session later this morning. But we meet once a month on that. We also meet with the senior staff people regularly, all the KPPA senior staff to be informed on what is going on with the KPPA. We've worked since the last meeting with the LRC and the PPOB co-chairs on the housekeeping bill. And I think that that has all been agreed upon and is working into the LRC process. I think that housekeeping bill will be made public sometime in the near future. It's pretty much what it was last year, but somehow it didn't get through the legislative process. The audit committee and the budget working group has been meeting. And Mike Lamb has explained a lot of the results of the, of our meetings. I attended, along with some others, the NASRA meeting, the National Association of State Retirement people. It was out in Denver, Colorado, or one of the suburbs called Broomfield, Colorado. It's a good meeting, and I think that we're dealing or have dealt with all of the issues that were discussed by other pension plans. And we're, in fact, a little bit ahead on things like proxy voting and some of the concerns about investments and all those sort of things. During the last 90 days, I've met personally with most of the trustees. A couple of them, a couple of you I met on the phone and had a kind of an update. And there were some projects that we discussed at that time that I've been actively working on. Dave Eager and I met with Senator Berg, a Louisville senator. And she is new to the public pension oversight board. So what we talked about was setting up a connection where basic issues could be discussed with Senator Berg in advance of some of the meetings to create a good understanding of what the issues are. There was also recently the legal update on the anatomy of the lawsuit that was very informative, I think. Many of you listened to it online. If you didn't listen to it live, it is available online and would contribute to the educational requirements that all trustees have. So that's all I've got to report, Lynn. If there's any questions, be glad to deal with those.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have questions? John? John, I'm checking in to go into law school simply because of Michael's presentation. Just kidding. Okay, the next we have is the 2024 Board and Committee meetings. This is an annual requirement that we adopted during the year. If we have to change it, a meeting becomes, instead of regular, would have to become a special. Sherry, I didn't pull this out of your notes, but I've got in my notes, our next regular meeting is in November, middle of November. And then we also have one in early September, or early December. Is that correct? Or did I, if you could just tell us what's our next two meetings?
Yes. Your next board meeting is November the 14th. And then you have another one that is scheduled December the 7th.
Okay. And then going into March, if you wanted to go to March, our next meeting will be again in the middle of March. And then we also have the annual meeting in April. So this is for you all, for all the trustees, to be able to mark your calendar. We, Sherry does a good job of trying to make sure that we don't overlap with other meetings, hopefully to keep some of these days that we're not putting enough, we're not putting too much, too much on the staff to do by having two or three meetings in a very short period of time. But this is something that we need to have a motion, and there is a motion listed. Would anyone like to make the motion to approve the 2024 Board and Committee meeting calendar?
Madam Chair, I guess my question would be, is there any way to consolidate the November and December meetings? Or is one of them required for a specific purpose?
The November, the November meeting is usually when you get the first look at the annual vow, which is due to PPOB by the 15th. So we like to give it to you before we meet him with 15th. And then the December meeting is in order to meet finances requirements so that you can approve the act for and the external. So no, we cannot really merge those unless you're okay with not having a meeting about the vow prior to giving it to PPOB. The December meetings are required for the Commonwealth Act first.
Gotcha. I figured there was a reason.
Great.
I had the same question about the March and April. So we, you know, there's just, you know, we can look at it, but when there's requirements, especially for things that we have to do external. Okay, so.
Are you looking for a motion, Madam Chair?
I am, David.
I would, Sherry?
I could just, one more, one more thing. The CERS board met yesterday, and I pulled up the September because they did make a change. And I just wanted to check with Erin Sarot just to make sure that this aligns with what they need for, for the retiree health plan committee. There's a requirement that they need for September. I just wanted to verify with her that there's no other change, that, you know, that the CERS board meeting for the 12th is good.
And it, the KRS calendar as presented here is fine because it's in that second week of September, the week after the joint retiree health plan committee meeting. We just need it to be in that second meeting. I asked for CERS to move their meeting up a week because the non-Medicare open enrollment begins on October 1st. So in order to get publications out to our retirees in time, we need to have those decisions by the boards in that second week.
Thank you. I just wanted to verify that.
Madam Chair, we approve the calendar as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, is there any further conversation, any?
Lynn, I have one other question. In December, CERS is meeting on the 9th, KRS is meeting on the 11th, and KPPA is meeting on the 12th. All of those are too late for the Commonwealth Act for, which we need ours approved by the 9th. So I think we're going to have to go back to C and ask them, everybody, ask everybody to move those to the previous week. Sorry, I thought we had already taken care of that, but we did not.
Are we already, are we required to do this at this meeting, to approve the calendar at this meeting?
Madam Chair, I would just amend my motion to say that we approve it as recommended and subject to revision to indicate a timely December meeting to meet the requirements as noted.
Michael, is that work?
It absolutely works, yeah. That allows us, that allows us to move the December meeting to that first week and it still be a regular meeting of the board, not a special meeting pursuant to Madam Chair's motion.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, David. Is there a second? I think, Mary, do you want to amend your second?
Yes, I second as amended.
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor of adopting the 2024 calendar? They are.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, Dave, you want to give the KPPA report?
You bet. So there is a written report in the board books. I'm happy to take questions, but I want to make a couple of comments before I do that. First of all, you're aware we are involved in a strategic planning process, and we've retained a firm by the name of ProValiant. I would say that all of us who have been involved to date would say we're very enthusiastic about the process. We think that's good things are going to come out of it, very beneficial. And we're convinced we retained the right firm. We're very pleased with ProValiant. But they're still in the research phase. I did have a discussion with them last week. They are aware that succession is a big issue for us, particularly with so many people with 20 more years service that were likely likely to lose a lot of leadership at KPPA. So we're looking for a way to systematically deal with those succession issues. I was also told that they are excited about some of the recommendations they're going to have with regard to process enhancement. So we're anxious to see that between now and the end of the year. The other thing I'd say there's at the senior management level, and to some extent below it, depending on on the issue that I'm going to talk about, we've made a concerted effort to get senior managers more exposure. By that, I mean more exposure with other systems, other retirement systems, with legislators, legislative committees, the executive branch. I mean, we now have senior executive branch people who are reaching out to not just to me, but to other senior staff people that I think we've done a really good job of building these relationships, and it's paying dividends. The and the second thing I'd say is we've had a concerted effort over the last mostly maybe 18 months to two years that senior management get a better understanding of the totality of KPPA, that they not be siloed. I could point to any number of discussions, routine meetings and discussions where four or five of us have come together, and that typically would be Mike and Michael and Rebecca and Erin and I. But we get into discussions in various areas, and Lori Casey also in HR. But if we get a discussion, for example, in HR, we've got a lot of input from a lot of people, and and they all are getting a better understanding of this. And I think the management team's going to be much stronger as a result of those efforts. So there is a slide up there. I'm trying to look across the way here. The conference. Yeah, you got that up. So there's an example. Rebecca went to the CEM conference, benchmarking conference out in Vancouver, and also to GFOA conference some summer. And then you drop on down, we've got a variety of people who are attending different conferences. John mentioned NASRA. We had two people out in NASRA. And and my view has been over the last 18 months, if we've got money to spend on conferences and we have a conference budget, I'd rather spend it on Erin and Rebecca and Mike and Michael and other people. Because my my term is limited, and I think the biggest bang for the buck that we can get out of conferences in attendance is going to be to broaden the exposure of the people that go to. So that's my comments. I'll be happy to take questions.
I just have one. Michael, Mike, didn't you go to the GFOA conference this year?
I did. That was also in May. So I probably did not update Mr. Eager prior to putting that together. So my apologies, but yes.
I'm selfish about that one, since I was on the board.
To John's point, I will tell you, when people come back from these conferences, we sit down, we talk about what they've learned, and it's in every case, they picked up, they made contacts with people on other systems that we can lever, and lever those contacts. So it's it's money well spent.
Thank you, Dave. Does anybody have any questions? Dave? I'll just add, when Dave's saying he's a short timer, about nine months right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Madam Chair, is there any way we could address that succession problem by essentially cutting the retirement benefits for anyone who chooses to retire in the next year? I'm just, I'm spitballing, I'm spitballing here, but you know, we could change the multiplier for just a short period of time.
All ears.
Yeah, or we could put a bonus out, you know, out in five years or something.
Yeah, 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 you get double if you just stick around for a while. Yeah.
Thank you, David.
Okay, other questions? Okay, on to new business. I do have a few things to add on new business. The first one is Mary Eas has agreed to go on the ACTDAC, the ACTDAC One Committee, which is the one with Jerry Powell as the chair and Dr. Carver as the other member. And I will be resigning, or I have resigned. She has gone through all the training and passed with flying colors, as I understand. But I also want to say that the time I spent on the ACTDAC Committee was one of the most educational times that I've had. I mean, you really realize the effect of what we're doing on individuals. Some of them, they disagree. Some of them, we agree. But the whole thing is what we do, what what is the results of what we do. So Mary, I think you'll enjoy it, you know, at least you'll learn, I'll say that. So I think this is a required, I think, notification. If Vicki is on, she can, is that an adequate notification?
Sorry, yes, I am. I was looking for my buttons. Yes, it just has to be recorded in the minutes of the next regular board meeting, and so you've announced it, and it will be recorded in a minute. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. John talked about the work he's doing, and I think we all need to commend him. He's done a lot of research, and basically, you know, our organization is going to be, if I'm not mistaken, three years old next year. Is that right, Dave?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's time to look at the processes. Are things, are there things that we can do better? And I really commend him with the effort that he's put in, and I think he's met with everybody on the on the board to discuss that. So I commend you on that. And then lastly, I just want everybody aware that coming up will be, and I don't think it's for a vote, coming up will be a discussion on what the rate of return on the annuities that we have. And the annuities would be people that are pulling out all their funds and putting them into annuity. I think that's the tier three funds, if I'm if I'm correct. And the recommended rate from our actuaries, GRS, is 5.25. I think they're the experts, and that does also equate what the private sector, the commercial rates are, the 5.25. And so that'll be coming to your attention. I think also that that the CERS is looking at a higher rate. I'm not sure what the justification is, but in my view, when you've got your actuaries looking at a number, and you're looking at the commercial rates of being the same as the actuaries, that's the comfortable and right way to go. But if you went higher, and and it would affect the balances, and as you know, our balances, our liabilities have been decreasing, and our balances have been increasing. So let me see if there's any questions for me or John on that subject.
Lynn, could I make a comment?
Please.
There's two issues. One is what should the rate be? And the second is, should there be a single rate, or does each system develop or each board develop their own rate? And staff strongly recommends that there be a single rate. It'd be it's treating members uniformly, in effect, in the benefit, but the administration complicates the administration. There are going to be upfront costs if we go to two, and Erin might be able to speak better to this. But so if at all possible, we we would like one rate, and that's going to mean some compromise. If you've got one system that wants a six and a quarter, six and a half, and one that wants a five and a quarter, there may have to be compromise if we're going to accomplish that. So and John, you want to speak to that as well?
Yeah. Some have made a connection between the annuity rates and our targeted rate returns for creating portfolio. There's not really a connection there. The connection is to annuity rates, and is it a fair annuity rate compared to the general market for annuities? Our advisors have said that that they recommend that we stay with the five and a quarter percent, which has been in in play for some period of time. So that's kind of where we are on it. I understand the administrative issues associated with it, but that's kind of where we are on that policy.
Yeah. And Lynn, I appreciate your position on on the protecting the assets, and that's GRS, that's kind of GRS's position on most of the things that they comment on, too. But they they will weigh in on this.
So that will be coming our way. And I don't, if I'm not mistaken, there won't be a vote. Is that right, Dave, or is there a vote on this?
There'll need to be a vote.
There will need to be a vote. Okay. But it's in the future.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Mr. Piercey has his hand up.
Okay. Fruit? No, sorry, Keith?
Just just a question. Does this rate only apply to tier three members that choose to annuitize their cash balance, or does it apply to something else?
These are the, Madam Chair, if I may, these are the actuarial factors that are used to for the annuity for the tier three members benefits. It's also for the optional forms of payments, such as the survivorship options that are available to members when they retire. And it also affects the cost of service purchases when a member purchases service credit. So it's more than just the tier three members.
So one of one of the issues back to the benefit issue is that if there are two different rates, then then let's say C's rate is higher than K's, then C's members will be buying service at a cheaper price than the K will.
Yeah. And and we we just have to avoid those types of things. It creates a terrible imbalance. Unfortunately, this is a board separation result. But we're going to have to figure out something. Because I mean, if we if we do, if we stick to the low rate and they go with a higher rate, we're hurting our own members, even though it may very well be the right thing to do and what the actuaries recommend.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Yes. Do you know what the rationale is for CERS to have a higher rate? I mean, are they relying on the same GRS recommendations or different recommendations, or?
I think it's driven a lot by the fact that their their assumption is is now six and a half percent, whereas K's five and a quarter.
Right.
And that's based on a variety of things, including the fact that the C plans are better funded. And as a result, they have a little more aggressive asset allocation, higher expectations in returns.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dave, when you can you estimate when this will be coming to us for discussion and a vote?
I'm going to start back at legal. Michael?
I don't know when this time to go to that.
I don't think, yeah, it's it. It can be done at any time. I think that there's some internal discussions between the CEOs and their board and amongst each other to come to a resolution on what maybe it should be. So whenever all of those details are worked out, then it could be brought to the board at any time.
Is the expectation to get done by year end, though? No? Okay.
It doesn't have to be, like I said, it it's there's no deadline that it's dependent on. The statutes do require that the benefits be actuarially equivalent, which setting your assumption or setting your factors based on, you know, the applicable assumptions does that. So, you know, they're looking into it, and I think they're they want to resolve it as soon as quickly as possible. So I expect something soon, but I don't have a definite date.
I would hate to see, I'd hate to see one board go ahead and do something on their own that was maybe conflicting what could happen if both boards worked out a common position.
Yeah, I was wondering if we should even think about a special meeting where the actuaries could come to the meeting, even possibly a joint meeting. And I don't think anybody else but me might like that. I don't think we have enough information in this to to even indicate a position. But I will say that I would be prepared that we might have to ask for a special meeting just to address this one issue.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, next is a closed session. And here we need to have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810C to discuss pending litigation. Is there a motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Michael, do we have to do anything else before?
No.
You have your statement. Okay.
So just have to have the vote.
Okay. All those in favor, closed session? Aye, aye. Opposed? Hearing none?
All right. Motion having been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose, and such motion having carried by a majority vote in open public session, the board shall now enter closed session to consider litigation pursuant to KRS 61.8101C because of the necessity of protecting the confidentiality of the system's litigation strategy and preserving any available attorney-client privilege.